I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, December 16th. To order, please.
(inaudible)
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 The first on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda of the December 16th, 2014 regular meeting as presented.
Second.
The motion in the second, I'll refer by saying, uh, opposed. Motion, please. Next, the approval of the consent agenda items.
Move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
The motion in the second, I'll refer by saying, uh, opposed. Motion, please. Next, we have public participation. Okay, we'll move on to the report of the superintendent. After we do that.
That was quick.[86.15][86.15](laughing)
You have some notes of appreciation that are in your packet. One thing I would point out is that filing for the annual school board election began this morning. We have, both of our incumbents have filed this morning. And that would be Mr. David Bova and Ms. Young Dunsey. Filing is open through January 20th, so there is still time, but we're pleased the incumbents have already signed on the dotted line since it's due. So kindergarten registration has been set for a couple Saturdays in March. St. Jen Elementary will be March 21st, beginning at 8:00 a.m. And Bloomsdale Elementary will be March 28th, also at 8:00 a.m. At this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Fleet for information on the backpacks program, and also just start with some of the principal reports.
Dr. Dunsey?
Mm-hmm.
You might add to that kindergarten registration, the times the call will be released on a later date?
Absolutely.
Otherwise, they'll be calling tomorrow.
Yeah, yes, the times will be announced at some point in the spring when we get a little closer to that date.
Okay, the backpacks for Friday program. We have 45 students in the R2 district signed up. The program, we use Bloomsdale Elementary and St. Jen Elementary, those students. And we do 28 at St. Jen Elementary and 17 at Bloomsdale. And that's, you know, that's kind of based on numbers. We have a little over 300 at Bloomsdale. And then, last time I checked, St. Jen, it was 500, right about in there. So, so for one backpack, it costs $320. So for those 45 backpacks, it costs $14,400 for the year. And every Friday, we send home a backpack full of food. At Thanksgiving, there was a nice Thanksgiving kit, some ice and turkey, that we sent. And then for Christmas, there's a Christmas kit we'll send home on Friday with this week's food. So they're actually going to get two this week. And that'll run through pretty much the end of the school year. We solicit donations from local businesses to fund that program. And I'd like to review those businesses now that have donated, just so I can recognize them. We have the American Legion Post 150, Beta Row, which is a teacher organization here at St. Jen, Bloomsdale Excavating, Lynn and Bard Casper. They're an older couple in the community that wanted to donate to the program. Citizens Electric, Wholesome, Lions Club, Mississippi Lime Company, R&amp;K Excavation, Rotary Club of St. Genevieve. We also had a Rotary Club member make an anonymous donation, didn't want to be recognized, but did make a donation. St. Genevieve Community Services Forum, St. Genevieve County Extension, Women's Club, and Mizell J.C.'s. So we greatly appreciate their support, and it's a wonderful program. I really enjoyed doing it. And thanks so much to our alternate school students, our STARS program. Every Friday, they pack the backpacks, they help me unload the trucks, Mr. Powell, Mr. Robinson, Mr. Ryan, all wonderful. So it's their service project. It's good.
Excellent.
Okay, you want me to start the principals' reports?
Yes.
All right. Well, Mr. Haney is not doing well today. And Mr. Mercer is doing wrestling this afternoon?
No, it's probably not.
Probably about, yeah. It seems like everyone is everywhere, so. I'm going to do the high school report. And he gave it to me, and it's four pages long, so.[314.64][314.64](laughing) There you go. The high school would like to start with a thank you. They would like to start by offering a sincere thank you on behalf of Mr. Haney and his staff for the wonderful gifts that they received for Christmas. They want you all to know that your kindness and generosity is truly appreciated. They held a college fair on Thursday, November 6th, at the high school. It is the seventh annual college fair that Mrs. Howe, Tina Howe coordinates, and Mrs. Lori Roth is her right hand, and helps make it happen. The event was a huge success, and over 100 participants attended. Colleges from around the state set up booths in the commons area. They provided information and answered questions to prospective students and their parents. The college fair also included a financial aid presentation by Katie Kwoshee, the Assistant Director of Admissions for New Student Programs at Southeast Missouri. This program was designed for all college-bound students. The event helps students beginning, you know, the college process, and although the college fair is designed to help St. Genevieve high school students, it's a free event, it's open to the public. They hold it every year about the same time, so anyone in the community is welcome to attend. Athletic reading, athletes reading. St. Genevieve High School athletes visited the third grade students at Bloomsdale Elementary and St. Jen Elementary recently. They read books to the students and answered questions that the students had about high school. The program is called Athletes Reading to Students, the arts program. They do this activity in the fall and winter. And this fall, the students who went and did the reading, we had Ashley Beox from softball, Alicia Pearson from band, Natalie Engel from volleyball, Madison DeRouf from girls' golf, Tristan Ponder from boys' cross country, Mallory Kohler from girls' cross country, and Luke Gettinger from our football program. Running of the Halls, the high school held Running of the Halls on November 21st to kick off the start of the winter sports season, and to premiere and show off the new video board. At that event, they also recognized the new National Honor Society students, and recognized their dedication to scholarship, service, leadership, and character. Leadership Program, Addie Steagle, daughter of David and Laura Steagle from St. Jen High School, has been chosen as the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Program. HOBE is the nation's foremost youth leadership development organization, whose mission is to inspire and develop the global community of youth to a life dedicated to leadership, service, and innovation. Addie will attend HOBE at Southeast Missouri State University in June. She is sponsored by the Women's Club of St. Genevieve, which is a chapter of the General Federation of Women's Clubs. Adria, how do I say her name wrong? Adria Mueller is the daughter of Gary and Diane Mueller, who was chosen as the alternate in case Addie's unable to attend. The Missouri Leadership. From the high school, 10th grade student Claire Fisher, daughter of Bob and Carla Fisher, has been selected as Missouri Leadership, selected to attend the Missouri Leadership Seminar. This seminar is designed to provide exceptional high school sophomores from across Missouri the opportunity to discover and expand their leadership potential. Claire will attend the seminar at the University of Central Missouri in Warrensburg. This summer, during the month of June, the alternate in case Claire cannot attend is Kaitlyn Bloom. She is the daughter of Tommy and Ann Wood, Amy Wood, Tommy and Amy Wood. Missouri Scholars Academy. This year, the recipient is Vivian Vaughn. She is the daughter of Darrell and Kathy Vaughn. Missouri Scholars Academy is a three-week academic program for 330 of Missouri's gifted students who are ready to begin their junior year in high school. The academy is a residential program, held on and partially funded by the campus of the University of Missouri. The academy reflects Missouri's desire to strive for excellence in education at all levels. The program is based on the premise that Missouri's gifted youth must be provided with special opportunities for learning and personal development in order for them to realize their full potential. If chosen, Vivian will attend Scholars Academy of the University of Missouri in June 2015. So she is our nominee, and I think she's filling out the application right now and trying to actually get in, so. MoDOT Bridge Building. Congratulations to the engineering graphics architect and independent studies students sponsored by Mr. Anthony Eubanks. They took six of the top 10 places and finished second out of 41 schools at the 11th Annual MoDOT Bridge Competition. Individual winners were, third place Andrew DeRouf, fifth place Brian Shaw, sixth place Morgan Schenk, seventh place Austin Brewer, eighth place Joe Allen, ninth place Jacob Cole, and first place in the electronic bridge competition went to Morgan Schenk. So that is amazing. So congratulations to the following students for earning the honor of being chosen as members of our National Honor Society. We have, and it's a big list, so here we go. Doug Bosler, Emma Bosler, Nicole Bowman, Truss Bowman, Kaitlyn Bowman, Jessica Boyer, Daniel Ditch, Natalie Engel, Thomas Engel, Men Inman, Claire Fisher, Dalton Giesler, Cameron Gettinger, Samantha Grimminger, Brooke Hasty, Taylor Hasty, Amy Hook, Maya German, Amanda Castner, Danielle Kimber, Mallory Kohler, Kaitlyn Kreidler, Lauren Kucha, Riley Meyer, Tate Meyer, Benjamin Naggar, Crystal Naggar, Tristan Ponder, Jessica Probst, Madison Reynolds, Ashley Schmidt, Kelsey Schmidt, Austin Swint, Addie Steagle, Kaitlyn Sikowski, Kendall Sikowski, Nicole Upchurch, Vivian Vaughn, Ashley Beox, Taylor Werner, and Reagan Zurwick. They held this induction ceremony on Wednesday, November 19th at 6:00 p.m. at the PAC, and their sponsors are Mrs. Tina Howe and Mrs. Christian Googel. So, sorry, I forgot. The high school student council held their annual blood drive on November 26th. StuCo is sponsored by Mrs. Nikki Reed and Mr. Dustin Keeker. FCC LA. Students and staff at the high school participated in the annual Thanksgiving food drive to help local families have a nice Thanksgiving. The project received a record number of dinner kits this year with a total of 52 entire kits, $192 and 157 additional food items. It was a competition with the fifth hour class periods, and Mrs. Christian Googel's speech class collected the most. Second place was awarded to Mr. Kyle Swice's general science class. Third place to Mr. Brooks, Mr. Mike Brooks College Prep American History Class. Dr. Gary Smith's multimedia Adobe Premiere class received fourth. Fourth and the fifth place winner was Mr. Boyd's Economics Class. All of these donations were presented to the East Missouri Action Agency. Speech, congratulations to the following competitive speech students who advanced to semifinals after the preliminary round. We have Kirsten Schramm in storytelling, Austin Caldwell in extemporaneous speaking, Joe Allen extemporaneous, okay, Austin's was in extemporaneous speaking foreign, Joe Allen in extemporaneous speaking domestic, and Morgan Uzelle extemporaneous speaking domestic. These students will perform at the finals and best is sometime this year. The STARS program raised leaves for the elderly on Thursday, November 13th. It included four separate yards, and they continue, like I said, to do the backpack program. German Club, on November 9th, German Club participated in the MoDOP's Adopt a Highway Program, picking up trash on Highway 61. They also took part in the cultural fest, cultural fest held on November 13th in the high school cafeteria. Members served pretzels, danced the land, land layer?
Yeah.
Did I say that right? And crafted gingerbread hearts as one would see in the Oktoberfest in Munich. German Club is sponsored by Mrs. Kayla Kinnich. Newspaper staff. This month, members of the Spirit Newspaper Staff, sponsored by Mrs. Audrey Kingery, put together their first print edition of the newspaper for the school year. All stories were reported and written by the students. Students designed the page and website setups, and the paper was distributed on Wednesday, November 26th, to all the students. Special thanks to Dr. Gary Smith and Mrs. Nancy Toomey for organizing and sponsoring the high school's first honor of code project. Over 34 students met and wrote computer code for one hour on Wednesday, December 10th. To date, 77,259,765 have participated in the global initiative. So that was pretty cool. The high school band and choir programs held their annual Christmas performances. Both jazz and concert band presented an excellent performance under the direction of Mr. John Moody on Wednesday, December 10th in the Performing Arts Center. Show women's and concert choirs performed on an afternoon concert on Sunday, December 14th, under the direction of Mrs. Michelle Jokers and Miss Abby Gill-Kern. And St. Genevieve High School Drama Department presented the play Crazy Town on Saturday, December 6th, in the Performing Arts Center. The performance was wonderful. Mr. Haney said he appreciated all the hard work that goes into it, that Mrs. Googel puts into the direction and the energy and enthusiasm that the student performers present, and the production crew's effort. And last, he said the high school wishes you all merry Christmas and happy new year.
That was good.
Thanks.[950.75][950.75](laughing)
It's just so exciting to hear all the wonderful meetings and all the kids that are in the National Honors Society. That's quite a piece.
That's quite a piece.
Mr. Taylor? Well, after November and that long list, December was a little more tame at the middle school. We had a dental clinic on November 21st, St. Genevieve Middle School Band Concert on December 4th. Kids and Miss Elders both did an excellent job. We had a shelter-in-place drill on December 9th. The students were well behaved. They really followed the directions that we asked them to do. We asked them to take those drills seriously, and this was one where we asked teachers to go all out and go through our safety procedures and do all that, while Ms. Giesler and I run around the building checking doors and looking in to see if we can see things. So they did a fantastic job on that. Friday, December 12th, we had the Christmas dance put on by Ms. Otto and Mr. Otto in drama and design classes. We always have an excellent turnout for that. The kids love that because there's little prizes and games and all kinds of stuff. St. Genevieve Middle School Choir was at the PAC on December 14th as well. They did their Christmas performance. Last night, we held the first St. Genevieve Middle School play in the old middle school gym in as long as anyone can remember. And if you remember, this is amazing to me, so I'm going to say it again. Those lights that are out in the gym that have been hit with balls for years and years and years and years. We flipped the breakers and got on a tall lift and readjusted them, and every one of them still works, so they don't make things like that anymore.[1052.41][1052.41](laughing) It was just amazing.
(laughing)
Congrats to Drama and Design for putting on a play. They had to be flexible. Between the snow days, we had to reschedule, and the PAC wasn't open. So they were expecting this big, huge stage, and they were excited about going back in the middle school, but it is much smaller than our Performing Arts Center. So they did a fantastic job. Fall sports in the middle school is well underway. NJHS Star of the Month for December is Ms. Abby Ingleman, an eighth grader. Abby's the daughter of Dana and Al Ingleman. She was chosen for her continued commitment to and leadership in NJHS. Congratulations, Abby. Finally, our St. Genevieve Middle School Feature Staff or Teacher for December is Ms. Pam Yates. I had Mr. McDaniel run from our faculty meeting this morning out to crossing guard duty and take over for her and send her in, so she was surprised and found overwhelmed. Pam is always so kind to all the students. She takes the time to help them out with any question that they may have. She also puts new bulletin boards up for everyone in the upstairs hallway to enjoy. I especially like when the Cardinals go up because you know it springs here. Another job that she takes on is crossing guard in the mornings, which is not the easiest thing to do. It's often cold and wet, but she stands there every day to keep our students safe. Pam always seems to have a smile on her face, which makes everyone who passes by feel better. So Pam is our faculty staff Person of the Month, and that's the middle school.
Great. Lori and I have a surprise for you tonight. We've decided that we're going to present together, because what we found out was she would say something and I would say something, and it would kind of be the same. So we're going to have, yeah, that's right, or we'd say, oh, I forgot to say that. So we got together, and here's our list, and first, we're going to give you the things that we both did. And then we'll break into our own little separate additional things. There are a few things we do separately.
We thought we were going to say them.[1175.33][1175.33](laughing)
That's next month, so, yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna have our cats and our canes next month, so.[1183.25][1183.25](laughing) And we would also like to say, thank you very much for the wonderful board gifts. People were thrilled, and I was, I had a big vote in on that umbrella thing, because those football games, it's cold and wet a lot, so.
And the Tervis Cup is nice.
Oh.
People are putting their names on it because they don't want anybody getting their cups cold out.[1204.33][1204.33](laughing)
This is my first Tervis Cup I've taken. Oh, yours too. See, we could put that on the sink. All right, so, here we go. We had picture retakes.
We had six MRI trainings, and that was for six different grade levels, K, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. And we appreciate those support on the training, because the teachers learn so much, and they take it right back to the classroom and incorporate those strategies, so.
We had dental floral clinics for those who signed up in both of our buildings.
We had an awards assembly in both buildings, and that's where we give awards for perfect attendance, honor roll, and then special class awards like Most Improved and Penmanship, Good Listener, and things like that.
Both buildings were happily enjoying donuts from the district office, which sent them to us to show up their appreciation for us.
We both had family fun night. At my family fun night, we had 89 families, 342 people attended the event. We included a meal, including chili, hot dog, nachos, and we had several fall fun activity stations. We had a hayride, leaf rubbings, thankful turkey craft, fall stories, and face painting. A photo booth was also available for photos, for family photos.
Okay, at our family fun night, it was third through fifth grade, and we had a great time.[1294.91][1294.91](laughing)
We both had Veterans Day programs, and we had approximately 65 veterans in attendance. And I wanted to thank Sharon Giesler, because even though she's retired, she still coordinates that program, and she always does a wonderful job, and all the veterans always come and thank us for having them, and it's a really nice program.
It's a wonderful program. Ours is put together from the beginning, since we've started it, by Jerry Diesel, and her years as a military wife really show through. And so she's the one responsible for it, and she cries every year, so.
We also went to PLC training. It's a PLC sustaining training, and we send a teacher per grade level, like I send K3 and 5, and she sends 2, 4, opposite grade levels.
Yeah.[1352.25][1352.25](laughing)
Yeah, thank you. You're welcome. And we went to that on November 14th, and it's a good refresher, because it takes us back to what PLCs are, and sometimes after so long, you kind of be away from that. But it's a good reminder to analyze the data and make sure that we're sharing that with people.
We also send out mid-quarter grades.
We had a district-wide reading curriculum meeting to review the curriculum that they wrote this summer.
We had leadership team meetings in each of our buildings.
We had a leadership meeting, and we scored ourselves on our teamwork and our analysis of data. And then we talked about how each grade level addresses the four corollary questions of PLCs.
We both have boards that we put up in our building for our teachers to put up students' exemplary work. So it's a big deal. Ours is called brag and drag, and Lori's is the wall of fame.
And then we both give out birthday books each morning for any students that have birthdays.
We both had faculty meetings with our faculty. Ours is early in the morning. And one of the main things we did was a tabletop safety discussion. And there are some situations that Julie sends out to us, and they're great, just to say, what if, what if, what if. So those were very good.
And then we had a PTO, I had a PTO meeting in my building, and she had a PTA meeting.
We sent members of our staff to CPI training. We're trying to get gradually, move through our staff and get them trained.
We have fourth and fifth grade care team meetings. That's where we discuss concerns that we have about students and any help that we can give them.
I had some, I had four transfer outs in my building and five transfers in, so we're still ahead of the game.
I had two in and one out. So we're both still ahead of them.
Okay. Individual events in my building, KFBS 12 visited and recorded about three of our classrooms reciting the Fledge of Allegiance, and one of them has already played back on the morning show. They gave us a call when it came out. We had a Title I Family Fun Night, which was, I think I already said that. We did get to attend, one of the big benefits is being close here. Jack and the Magic Beans was put on by the middle school, and they invited us to attend, and it was terrific. The kids just loved it. Our PTA held a movie night, and we held a coin drive to support Shop with a Pop. Our literacy had a scheduled meeting, and we had book orders, and we're working on our literacy book room, and the teachers are still coming up with books that they'd like to have added to it, so we're still ordering. And our fundraiser items were sent home. And we'd just like to thank all the families in St. Jen for supporting us. I know those things are dragging your kids door to door, or taking that paper to work, but it pays for our field trips, and it pays for those buses for the field trips, so we wanted to say a week thank you.
Okay, in my building, we had Teacher and Staff of the Month. Teacher of the Month was Ashley Grine for her dedication to her students and making learning fun. And staff was Debbie Carroll for making our building look so great and for working so well with the students during the day. Our fourth grade went to St. Agnes and attended an electricity program. They talked about protons, electrons, circuits, and magnets. Then our PTO held a holiday extravaganza in the gym, and various vendors set up booths and sold items, and then we got a percentage of the sales that night. And then we also do a nutrition program for kindergarten and first graders, and that's through the Missouri Extension Office. They send out a teacher, and she brings out snacks and shows them how to make their own healthy meals. And that's it at Bloomsdale. Thank you. Thank you. You guys. (inaudible). And I would like to add, I'm going to brag on the students and the entire staff. I sent out a plea, back then I wrote them, to the top of the cup, because we knew we weren't going to do the business for kids. And the staff and students rallied everywhere, and we, I got to hand Officer, or Deputy McCarty of $3,200 donation, and he was one of the first times, really talking about that one. I mean, he was speechless. He was expecting about $500, and he's fretting, not sure how he could serve all these kids, so he was totally feeling the way. So I'm very proud of what these students and all of our staff and other students, it's awesome.
Are you just so excited about this Christmas? What a present. What a better present can we get as a board? You guys are awesome. Really are. Okay, I guess we'll move to safety issues.
You have in your packet of highlighted the safety drills that were conducted in each building. Before we move on to unfinished business, it seems like we never say it often enough, but I really appreciate all the things that our building admin do in each of their buildings. And it's kind of highlighted, I think, with all the successes and the activities that they report on every month to the board. And I think sometimes we forget that a lot of those things happen because of the leadership that's shown in those buildings and the hard work of the faculty and staff that leads to the success of those kids. So I think that should be noted, and should be noted frequently, that the great job that they do in each of their buildings.[1720.16][1720.16](applause)
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Ready for the next item? Instructional program presentation. We have with us tonight the elementary librarian, who, it's kind of interesting, because Peggy and Lori work together to do their report tonight, and Jessica is in both buildings, so it kind of, we have a theme going.
You need, right? Go.[1753.16][1753.16](laughing) I have a handout, because what's a teacher without a handout? You want to pass that one? It's not as long as you want. You can have extras. The front page is just the library curriculum as a pacing guide, so you can see what each grade is learning and when they're learning it, during which quarter. So this is nothing new. This is the library curriculum that was already approved several years ago. And on the back side, if you'll take a look at that.
And on the back side, if you'll take a look at that, these are the goals we have for the elementary library students that we would like them to master before they move on to middle school. So all of these goals are based upon the curriculum on the first page. Anybody have any questions for me on the curriculum or the goals? Like I said, that's nothing new, nothing that I implemented. That's just a new way to look at it. Then on the next page, we do have something new. These are the updates that I've made to the library this year. There aren't very many because since this is my first year, I didn't want to jump in and make a whole lot of changes before I kind of evaluated and saw what was working and what needed to be improved. But the changes we did make were the All For Books program. We added that to each Scholastic Book Fair in both buildings. So what the students did was they raised money by bringing in coins each day we had the book fair. And we put all that money together. Um, Saint Jen Elementary raised an extra eight hundred dollars and Bloomstale raised an extra two hundred dollars. And one hundred percent of that money went straight to the library and I used it to buy books from the book fair. So that was pretty exciting to have that extra money and that we were able to use one hundred percent of it. Uh, we did update our follet system, which is our library program. That didn't cost anything extra. Um, it was, we just realized we were using an outdated system, so we updated to twelve point five or before we were on version ten. And we're still exploring some of the features that that will offer the students. But it will help them to be able to search for books easier. Um, I did do some updating in the cataloging procedures. Whenever we do receive new books, there are many, many steps we need to go through before they're ready for the shelves. And instead of manually writing in the date we received the book, the vendor and the price, we went ahead and changed and put that into the library computer system. So it's faster for us and then it's always on there. The last thing, it are the Mark Twain Awards. The Mark Twain nominees are given to the library every year. They're a series of books that grades three through five, read, and in April they vote on their favorites. And the winner gets the Mark Twain Award. So to help motivate the students to read those books, I created several book trailers for each of the books so that the kids could look at those, kind of like a movie preview and get them pumped and excited to read those. And at the bottom, I have goals that I would like to accomplish for the next school year. So you can take a look at those. We do have lots of eBooks, but I noticed they are not being checked out. So I'm going to look into that and see what we can do to motivate teachers and students to use eBooks that we have. I noticed Bloomstale does not have a professional materials section in the library, so I'd like to get one of those for them and start putting books there specifically for the teachers. So that when they come in and request a book, they don't find that it's already checked out by a student and they can't use it. And that happens sometimes. And lastly, um, I would like to look into having an additional two to three day warehouse sale. Uh, that's the last it offers for book fairs at the end of this year. All you, they need to do is roll in this big cart full of books. You open it up, it only lasts a couple of days. And they are buy one, get one free books. So then even with students who don't have necessarily a lot of money, can get more books for their money. And it encourages them reading. Any questions for me?
How often do young students have library?
They have library for forty minutes once a week.
Then the teachers can schedule opportunities to go at different times, right?
Sure, yeah, they can send in individual students anytime that we're not having a class at Bloomstale.
If this book fair, is this, is this something like the one they have? Like, I guess it would be, we, I used to go down to Kate, who may have it at the Rex Center, I think. And we, the Zachary School was out, you know, it was a big uh, book sale. I was wondering if it was something like that.
I've not been to that one, so I'm not sure, but it, but it is essentially a big book sale. It's like walking into Barnes and Noble.
Oh, that's it. That would be, that's really anything. That's write down all of our books.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think there's kind of a preconceived notion that librarians sit in the library and wait for students to come in.
And just check out.
So, so they can check out a book. But I think if you look at page two uh, for the goals for the library and of course, it, it used to be this library and it's, the terminology has changed, the Library Media Center. Uh, and you see several things there that kind of relate to uh, to some of the technology. Uh, but, you know, being able to identify parts of a book and, and uh, research, um, you know, kinds of things and viability of sources, all those things are so important for us to do, so.
And you work with eight other kids?
Yes. I'm working on names yet.
Oh, that's good. Next we have the property liability and workers compensation insurance.
Yes, this is our, uh, the district's nineteenth year with the Missouri United School Insurance Council. Uh, it's uh, commonly referred to as music. Uh, we do continue to receive outstanding rates and service from them. Uh, you have some additional uh, information in your packet that kind of breaks down the, the assessment for the year. Uh, there's some, some things that go into uh, determining that assessment that varies from year to year. Things like uh, payroll, uh, if you have increases in property or increases in property values, uh, that is affected. And then of course, your uh, uh, there's an experience modifier. Our experience, experience modifier was up a little bit this year in comparison to last year. Uh, so our rate is up a little bit, but then looking back at the last, uh, really the last three years, this year's modifier was lower than it was in the two years prior to last year. So uh, overall, I, I think uh, we're in good shape there. Uh, we also have some options. Uh, one is an umbrella option that provides coverage up to uh, ten million dollars of liability. Uh, and then also, uh, there's a cyber coverage option that covers us for a variety of things. Probably the most prominent that you see in the news quite frequently is identity theft, uh, those kinds of things. Uh, we do have a, a very secure network that protects some of that information, but uh, uh, we do have some coverage in case there, there were some, some sort of issue with that. Uh, so I would recommend to continue with uh, Missouri United School Insurance Council.
Move to approve rates with uh, Missouri United School Insurance Council assistant.
And the motion is second, I'll say by saying aye. I oppose, motion against. We'll move on to new business. First is the approval of the bond, of the bond underwriting.
Uh, yes, uh, sent out a request for proposal to three of the, uh, well, actually the three most prominent companies in the state of Missouri that provide underwriting services to school districts. Uh, and received proposals back from two of the three companies. I have a proposal from Steeple Nicholas who has serviced the district on the last couple bond issues. Uh, as well as uh, a proposal from LJ Harton Company. Uh, had um, extensive interviews with both companies. In both cases, uh, felt pretty good about their proposals as far as, uh, we've had a good track record with, with Steeple and then I've had a good track record with LJ Hart in the past as well. Um, in particular with LJ Hart, their, uh, their proposal obviously met all the requirements. Uh, they presented a fiscally conservative approach, which I think is important. Not only to, to me personally, but I think it's important to the district and to the, uh, and to the community. Uh, they do provide comprehensive financial planning services for the district. Uh, and uh, for uh, which, they'll talk about it a little bit later, but uh, for proposed refunding uh, of some general obligation bonds that will save the district significant uh, money. Uh, and then also uh, a proposed bond issue uh, potentially in April. So uh, uh, when you looked at all of those things along with their very competitive cost of issuance, you know, basically you tend to do a bond issue, there's, there's fees and things that you pay. Uh, and their cost of issuance, pricing was very competitive. So uh, I recommend that you uh, go with LJ Harton Company as your, as your underwriter on the next issue.
I move to approve LJ Harton Company as the district's municipal bond underwriter for the proposed two million, twenty-five thousand general obligation, refunding bonds and the proposed four point two million general obligation bond.
Second.
Okay, the motion is second, I'll say by saying aye. Motion carries. Next is the approval of the resolution for a special school bond collection.
I want to talk a little bit uh, first about the process, uh, just to uh, kind of remind everyone. I know some of you participated in that process, but um, I want to talk a little bit about the process that, that we use to uh, identify potential projects in the district and uh, and then also uh, going through and, and trying to prioritize those in a way that, that kind of makes sense. It's a very extensive process that involved a lot of people. The overall district level committee had over forty participants, uh, made up of community members, uh, faculty, staff, administration, students, uh, board members, parents. So we had a, a, you know, a really diverse group that, that represented all the constituents of the school district. Uh, they had the daunting task of, of trying to identify projects and then to prioritize them uh, in a way that, that made sense for the district. As a part of that process, we, we took the overall committee, uh, which had representatives from every, uh, every building and broke them into building level committees. Uh, they did building tours, uh, as a part of that, uh, which the principals very eagerly led. And then identified those, those projects at the building level without any concept of what things might cost. So it was really uh, based on student need, uh, and, and you know, the needs moving forward of the district to, uh, to meet the needs of those students. After that whole process and we brought them back together as a district committee. And the, uh, the list from the four buildings were integrated uh, into one list. And there's a lot of items on the list and we're not going to go into uh, naming off, off each item. But in general, they, they fell into kind of four general categories. I think student safety was the thing that, that popped up the most and, and was really prioritized at, at uh, at the highest level. So that's, uh, that's in there. Energy efficiency and conservation was, was a big thing. Uh, and then just some plant upgrades and, and some facility improvements. So really kind of went through a, a big process to get to where we, uh, where we are tonight. I think uh, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to the representatives who have here from LJ Harton Company to kind of talk about uh, some of the things that, that we talked about with respect to uh, what we felt we could comfortably uh, do within our, our twenty-six cent debt service levy that we currently have in place, uh, to where we could put forward a no tax increase bond issue. So we have with us tonight, Courtney Wegman, and I'll let her introduce Sarah because I'm not sure I can get that last name.
First, I just want to thank the board very much for having us here this evening. Again, I'm Courtney Wegman. I am the vice president with LJ Harton Company. Uh, with me tonight is Sarah Buskowitz. She's a long name. She's an analyst with our company. Uh, between the two of us, we had put together the numbers and then with my meetings and with Larry Hart's meetings, with Dr. Lindsay, talked through uh, the new money bond issue, the no tax increases he had mentioned, as well as the refunding of the Series two thousand seven A bond. So I'll talk a bit about the new money and then I will have Sarah talk more about the refunding itself. So as we mentioned, the four point two million dollar bond issue would be a no tax increase. Uh, currently, your bonds are set to be fully paid off in two thousand thirty. This would be another five years, so looking at doing about a twenty-year financing. Again, this would not raise a debt service levy of twenty-six cents. Uh, using conservative projections with the growth in your assessed valuation, um, as well as some other information with the TIPS, as well as just knowing about wholesome in the future. Uh, we have had, uh, like I said, conservative projections that the district would be able to afford this without having to raise your levy in the future. Uh, so who knows, conservative projection. Obviously, if your assessed valuation goes up, it makes things easier and you're bringing even more money. Uh, overall, I, I think after speaking with Dr. Lindsay, the four point two million dollars would cover uh, pretty majority of, of the projects. Uh, in addition to that, one of the items we did look at was that refunding of your uh, Series two thousand seven A bonds. They are callable and so you can prepay them at no penalty in two thousand sixteen. Because they were new money bonds, you, you can do a refunding of them. So at the time, those rates are significantly higher than what they are right now. Doing the refunding is going to save you interest. I'll, Sarah, speak more to that as far as how much it would be to save you.
Sure. Uh, on this refunding, we looked at a couple of different structures. And out of these three or four structures that we looked at, we evaluated them in terms of total savings to the district after taking into account cost of issuance. And then we also looked at how each structure would fit into your existing situation and then how it would also fit in if you were to go ahead with these new money bonds. After looking at these three structures, um, the modified principal structure would save the district over two hundred thousand dollars in interest expense. And like Courtney said, it would shorten the repayment period from, I think, twenty-three years.
Twenty twenty-six under those bonds.
Oh, twenty twenty-six by two years.
So instead of having, you know, you're, you're shortening it up, so you're saving interest in those two years. And then with restructuring, the two thousand seven A bonds, we can make that fit in with the new money so that the future levy where it is in two, the twenty-six cents, it allows you to have healthy balances within your debt service account. So overall, a win-win with both of those options.
So two hundred thousand dollars savings, what period is that? Does that mean anyone know where the balance is?
So it's going to be, um, it's going to be split up. So there's some years where, um, let's say you had a hundred thousand dollars of principal and then the first few years that you would actually get refunding, you're going to have savings because you would make those interest only. Uh, and that allows for the new money because you're saving some that you're not having to pay. So it, it, it allows you to do that new money. Uh, the other in, big interest savings are going to be at the very end. So in years twenty-five and twenty-six, you would have big savings. Those middle years, there's going to be less savings because instead of having your principal from here to here, we're just shortening it, uh, and making it better in the middle, I guess you could say, uh, in order to accommodate the new money, but still not allow your balances to go too, too low by the needs. Any other questions? Welcome board.
Could you talk a little bit about the call feature and the importance of that?
Yes.
Moving forward, because that's, that's one thing that was a major difference between LJ Harton Company and most, really, all
Most other underwriting firms.
Bond, bond underwriting.
Yes. Um, so as I mentioned, your Series two thousand seven A, they're callable in sixteen, a nine-year call feature. And basically, just to give you a bit of background, that feature is there and does not allow you to prepay any of those bonds early if interest rates are better. So say if they were callable in two thousand twelve, it would have been a five-year call feature, which is typically what LJ Harton Company does, you put five-year call features for less on the bonds. If it would have been callable then and rates would have been lower, you would have potentially been able to refund them at that time. Uh, looking at the new money as well as these refunding bonds, most likely with refunding bonds, you would put a three to four-year call feature. Uh, with the new money bonds, they would most likely do a five-year call feature unless, um, looking into the future with wholesome. Depending upon when they come on the books, with the additional revenue that comes in, in order to keep your levy at that twenty-six cents, the short call features prepayment would allow you to either refund if rates were lower or do prepayments of bonds in order to keep your levy at the twenty-six cents. Because with the Missouri State Auditor, you're not allowed to grow huge balances within your debt service account. So in order to uh, basically keep your levy and your balances where they need to be, the call feature would be allowed to be a prepayment. And that is, as Dr. Lindsay mentioned, uh, a characteristic and something that we're very proud of with LJ Harton Company being able to do the short call features. And some of our competitors may say, the short call features And some of our competitors may say, the short call features, they're going to cost you money because the investor is going to say, I want a longer period of time with which then I know I'm going to get a certain interest rate. When you do financing, we do bring a comparison of interest rates. So, we have your rates compared to other financings in the market at that time to show you, even with the short call feature, your rates are very competitive with other issues that are there.
I'd like to move to approve the resolution calling for a special school bond election to be held on April seventh, two thousand fifteen.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a safe trip and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you as well.
Okay, next we have curriculum revision.
Um, you should have auto mechanics in your packets. Mr. Gibson is the expert in auto mechanics. I have heard read the curriculum. Do some of the things, so I was pretty proud of that. But he did a very good job. As you can see, it's, it's a two-year program, so the curriculum is very extensive and very big. What he did once he was finished writing, earlier this fall, he has an advisory committee that he meets with and he met with the committee, reviewed the curriculum, discussed it with them. They are individuals in our community who are in the auto industry and really are very knowledgeable and are great resources for that. They approved the curriculum, so I bring it to you tonight. It's ready to go. He did a fantastic job.
Well, thank you. Graduating, how many hours till you graduate?
Um, we have a partnership with MAP for the career technical education. They get credit and it's all free if, you know, if they sign up and they go through the program. I do not remember how many credits they will get off the top of my head.
It's a good launch pad for getting that.
It's a great launch pad because you can go over to MAP and finish that degree. You know, it's not going to take you too long.
Which saves parents tuition costs.
A lot.
I move to approve the curriculum revision for auto motor technology one and two as presented. Second.
And motion in the second, all in favor. Oh, excuse me. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the addition of assistant FFA sponsor.
We have what amounts to a, a nice problem. We, the interest in FFA has really grown, you know, over the past few years. So much so that we now have, I believe, at last count, seventy-seven students in FFA, which is, is great and wonderful. She needs some help with that many students, especially if they are, are all going to competition over some, some activity. They take two buses. When you have one sponsor, then that kind of makes, makes the things that, that are somewhat difficult. I, I did look at both FCC LA and FBLA, which would be similar organizations. They had, I think one had fifty-four students, the other one had forty-seven students, and both of those groups had assistant sponsors. So, I would recommend that you add a position for assistant FFA sponsor effective for the current screen year. We'll post it and, and in your approval and then maybe have somebody to recommend it to January fourth. Most of their competitions and things that they do are in the screen. Would recommend that you.
I'd like to move to approve the addition of an assistant FFA sponsor.
In motion in the second, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Before we go into closed, closed session, I would like to say on behalf of the board that you know how much, you know, you guys were telling us this evening, that we really want to let you know how much we appreciate our new superintendent, our new assistant superintendent, all the administration, all the, all the staff, everybody. Because without all of you guys, this, this school wouldn't be what it is. And, and we're, we're excited when we go out. When I go to some of the state meetings and stuff, they, oh, it's in St. John. And it's like, yes, I am, you know? And then they, you know, what I don't tell them, then they get to tell us. But we're all, every one of us are out there. And I know a lot of us don't get to come up sometimes during the day. But if we don't get to come up, we at least see some of you out and, you know, we try to tell you what a good job you do with. Tonight would be a great night to let you all know how much we appreciate you, how much we love you and Merry Christmas and a great New Year. Okay. Mr. McDaniel.
Okay. I move on to the board of certification. Now, a closed meeting with a closed record, the closed vote following the record open meeting. On January twentieth, two thousand fifteen, we held the R.J. Hart and Company Library, seven fifteen Washington Street, St. John, Missouri, for the purpose of discussing and voting upon the following items: legal action, causes of action or litigation, lease, purchase or sale of real estate, hiring, firing, discipline, or promoting particular employees, proceedings involving the mental or physical health of identifiable individuals, scholastic probation, expulsion or graduation of identifiable individuals, testing and examination material, welfare cases of identifiable individuals, preparation for negotiation with employee groups, software codes for electronic data processing and documentation thereof, specifics, specifications for repetitive readings that are approved or published, sealed bids and related documents to the bids are open, sealed proposals and related documents until all proposals are rejected, or any documents related to negotiate a contract until a contract is executed, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, records protected from disclosure by law, scientific and technological innovation to which the owner has a proprietary interest, records related to municipal hotlines established for reporting abuse and wrongdoing, confidential privileged communication with an auditor, operational guidelines, policy and specific response plans for preventing or responding to a critical incident, existing or proposed security systems and structural plans of district property, proportion, proportion of a record that identifies security system or access code, records that identify and allow unauthorized access to or on loss of disruption of the configuration of components or the operation of a computer, computer system, computer network, telecommunication network, credit card numbers, personal identification number, digital certificates, physical and virtual keys, access codes or authorization codes that are used to protect electronic transactions. Now, further move and notice this meeting is tentative and generally, as required by law.
We have motion in the second, roll call. Eric Lauser?
Yes.
Paul Nova?
Yes.
Charlie Brother?
Yes.
Tom Dante?
Yes.
Karen McDaniel, yes. Martha Reeser?
Yes.
Rick Brulev?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven oh.
I move to go to closed session with a closed record and a closed vote after a short break.
Okay, motion in the second, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.